I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. First meeting of January 3rd, so I'd like to do a roll call. Everyone is present. And then I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll do the opening.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to take this opportunity to officially welcome the new council on behalf of the staff and as well as the citizens of Melrose for this last election cycle. And to begin, I would like to do the oath of office to our mayor, and then from there, the mayor will then swear in the other two candidates. So I...
I...
State your name.
Joe Finkin.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties of the office of mayor of the city of Melrose.
And to discharge faithfully the duties of office of mayor of the city of Melrose, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my judgment and my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. You guys are next. Raise your right hands. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Mark Bunkerhill.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to faithfully discharge the duties and office of city council member.
Faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council member.
Of the city of Melrose, Minnesota.
The city of Melrose, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard, guys. Well, now the hard stuff is over. Just want to welcome everybody here tonight. Can I get approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Open forum. Open forum is here for anybody who would like to speak about anything. Feel free to come on up and talk. Everybody's got to see ya. And just state your name for the record.
Pat Shaw. But I had your turn.
No.
Okay. I'm just making sure. Sweet. I was not able to make the severance pending, and I'm just curious if there's going to be another meeting. Was it part of that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just curious if there's going to be another meeting for the river issue that we can sit in on. I saw in the paper that there might be a decision made tonight, and was hoping that maybe we could forego that, not just for me, but if there were other people that missed the meeting as well.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak? We will be talking about it later on in the agenda, about it, okay? Okay. All right. We have the consent agenda, appointment of the following assistant weed inspector, city forester, animal control officer, the official newspaper, animal shelter, and resolution number 2019-1, resolution designating fish depository of the supplemental depositories for the city funds. If there's any questions, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. No reports? Okay. All right, now we're on to action items to make some appointments. Acting Mayor, Tony, do you want that?
Sure.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Two, Public Utilities Commission, I would be happy to take that, and also Jeremy Kramer is also seeking an appointment that I would make a motion for him. Is there any questions or...
I guess I was, I've been sort of interested in public utilities also.
Okay.
Quite a bit of experience in managing data centers, which are fairly high wattage, 40 KW, 80 KW, and quite a bit of project management, so I would also be interested in it also, so...
All right. Council, have at it.
So Mr. Mayor and council, what I would recommend is that somebody just make a motion to, for an appointment, and then second it, and then debate it, and then from there make a decision.
Sure.
I make a motion, appoint Mayor Finkin and Mr. Kramer to the board.
Okay.
I'll second that.
There's a first and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Neat.
Motion carried. Planning and zoning commission, Tony, still want to be on there?
I'd like to take a leave of absence if I could. It's been 10 years, and I think somebody else should...
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to do planning and zoning?
Well, since I'm new to the game, if you need somebody to fill a spot, I'll be more than happy to offer to have Travis do it. That's fine. If you need somebody to plug in there, I'll let us sit on the planning and zoning commission.
Okay.
I will make a motion to nominate Bunker.
Okay.
Second.
First and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then second part, there was two applicants for planning and zoning, Wyatt Kemper, and then Sean Mears. Can I get a motion made, please?
So moved.
For who?
That's for both of them, correct? Or there's only one, there's only one spot. Ah. We better think about that for a second.
Sean Mears and Wyatt Kemper.
Yeah. Well, Sean has had, what has he been on there, two years?
Well, he's been on there, hasn't he?
Three years, four years, something like that.
I believe Mr. Kemper, is he still a student at St. John's? I think he was going to school at St. John's University. I don't know if he's completed his...
Well, Sean's been, Sean's been a pretty good member. He's given a good input, so I would feel comfortable nominating Sean.
So I'll second that.
Okay. All right. There's a first and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Matta, native council representative. I put Travis as that, otherwise anybody else want it?
I'll make a motion for Trav.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. First and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Parks and Rec Board, Justin, you still want that?
Yeah, I'll take that, yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion for Mr. Freeler to get that board.
A second.
Okay. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Fired Relief Association, Tony, you still want that one?
Sure, I'll take that.
Okay.
If you would like, I wouldn't mind stepping in, but that's up to you.
You want to... Yeah, it's like two meetings a year, so if you want to take it, that's just fine. I'll nominate...
Justin?
Mr. Freeler, but I'll, yeah, Justin Freeler.
I'll second that.
To fill out position.
Okay, there's a first and a second. On favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Melrose Housing Redevelopment Authority, Rachel Demick is seeking reappointment, and Bunker, did you want that one, or...
Yeah, that's fine. You asked me about it earlier. You said it's probably the place where I can disrupt things at least, so just stay with it.
Yeah. Is there anybody else that would like it? Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Grievance Representative, I've been the grievance representative. Tony, do you want that one, since you got off?
Yeah, I can, sure.
Okay.
Jump on there.
All right.
I'll make a motion for Mr. Clausen, the grievance representative.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Ad-hoc Committee Representative. Bunker, I was thinking of you, whatever, you guys want it? Okay.
Mr. Hill, up for that?
Apparently I am.
Make a motion for Mr. Hill.
All right.
I'll second.
A second? Okay. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Legal counsel, that's still Scott, right? Still want to put up with us for a while yet?
Three more years.
I'll make a motion, we appoint Mr. Demick's office.
All right. Second. Okay. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Old business, Lake Stream Restoration Rock Arch Rapids.
Mr. Mayor and council members, there's been a lot of discussion about the Rock Arch Rapids and the stream restoration. So tonight, we had a special council, we had a special meeting where we presented significant findings, and as best as we could represent that. And tonight is really the opportunity for the councils to provide their direction on what you would like us to do. It could be a couple different options before you tonight, and I'll just give you some suggestions, and please do with whatever you think is appropriate from there. Couple suggestions that have been presented to myself at the city's staff level has been to delay action by one meeting till next month, excuse me, till the February, the January 18th meeting, excuse, yeah, the January meeting here. And then we would then send out a notice to all the adjacent property owners again to say, we're going to have one last peer public comment on it, and then the council could provide formal action that evening. Option two is to take action tonight to reject the DNR's proposal, or to accept the DNR proposal as presented. A third option, a fourth option is to reject the DNR proposal, however, to continue to seek funding through the Lassard Sams, LCCMR, whatever it is, for everything to the east of the current dam. You're trying to use those funds as best as we can, and to delay any type of any future action on the lake restoration until the bridge project is completely done, and the budget's all done and financed, and we're all through that. So that was another option that was presented.
No, the work that would be done, like you say, east of the current bridge, would be to facilitate the building or the construction of the new bridge, correct?
Well, and there's some suggestions in regards to, we were planning to remove the craft wall, and I feel that that is a restoration back to natural habitat, and we feel that there may be some legitimacy to seeking funds from the state for that portion of it. It may be a stretch. I've already reached out to the hydrologists in the area about that scenario, and they were reluctant to, you know, provides, that they would support the funding application for that. We also explored some other creative solutions, which were rejected directly from them.
Probably due to the significant slope if the wall is removed.
Right. Yeah.
Would the request for funds, that would be a completely new request, I'm assuming?
I would, I think we can make an argument, I think we can make an argument under the current funding that we have, that we could just reduce that funding request, because it is a restoration, stream bank stabilization, habitat restoration, all that stuff. But again, that's all up to that board and committee and legislators and...
Well, I've had, I don't know how many, phone calls, conversations about the new proposed project, and there are a few people that are open to the idea, but by and large, I, in my, in my experience, there's way more opposition, and it's very direct opposition, not just an open, you know, I'm, you know, don't care what happens type of, it's like dead serious, don't do it, you know, keep the lake. That is, in my mind, holds a lot of water. There are too many unanswered questions about what the aftermath would look like, what the effects downstream would be, even upstream, what it would turn out like. I know we saw a bunch of good, or good resulting projects that they did, but obviously this is quite a bit different than most of those projects. I don't feel comfortable going forward with it. I think the sooner they know, the better they know that we're not going forward with it, if we decide that route. And I think we, I think we need to concentrate on getting the bridge done. That's been in the works for six years now, five years now, and this, you know, we really don't know yet, but it could potentially interrupt that process again also. And if we go down this other path, we could get another 50,000, 100,000 dollars into it and decide, you know, it's just not going to work. And that was never part of the discussion a year ago. I don't know why it should be today. Yeah. Lake Association obviously has some pretty strong feelings on it also, so...
I kind of echo what Tony said. I've been playing catch-up for about the last three months, trying to get up to speed on this. It kind of appeared that the new plan of the Rock Arch Bridge was the direction, I think, that everybody was fairly comfortable with.
Right.
Then it was that, correct me if I'm wrong, November 19th meeting, when all of a sudden we're changing gears here, and we're looking at diminishing the amount of water out here in Mill Pond, putting in some rapids and fish passage and that. One thing that I've pretty much figured out for sure is that as much as we'd like to think we do, we don't own this body of water. The state of Minnesota owns it, and to get anything done at all out there, there's permitting, there's studies, there's money that's spent, and a sudden shift in what looked like was a pretty good idea to now, this is your only option, is just unacceptable. Here again, I've heard from a number of people, the property owners, stakeholders, call them what you want, that live along Mill Pond here, and the majority of them, I'd say 90%, don't want the bridge to be removed at this time, or excuse me, not the bridge, the dam. I personally kind of like the idea that was proposed at the December meeting, but I'm not here to, I don't live on Mill Pond, I don't, I'm not here to represent my views necessarily. It's more the views of folks that are involved in this project, and that's the folks that are living along the water out here, so as far as the Rock Arch Rapids proposal, I don't think I can get behind that right now. I'd like to see us, if there is some way to try to help facilitate dropping the costs of the bridge, but like Mr. Clausen said, if we start changing things now, how much more engineering and design, and Mike Nielsen could probably answer this a little bit, but how much more changing is the bridge going to get slowed back another year as far as construction? So I think that they've got a plan in place as far as replacing the bridge, I believe is supposed to happen in 2020.
Yes.
And we're kind of getting in a situation where I don't know that we can go about changing our minds any more times. That and the fact that we don't use the money, we're freeing it up for somebody else.
Travis?
I would say if most people don't want the drought down, that's the direction we should move. Funding on the east side, I guess, would be open if that's available, but if that hinders a future project, then pass on that as well.
Okay. Justin?
I have to agree with all. One thing that I have been seeing a lot of pushback is from the Melrose Lake Association, and one thing I think with that is, I don't know if I've really seen any change with the Melrose Lake Association on, like, their improvement. What is their direction? Are they looking into ideas of improving it from getting all full of green moss in the summertime, you know, or trying to get rid of, I mean, besides trying to dredge, I mean, we know that's kind of not an option because it's $10 million, and it's, you know, whether it's 70 years or 100 years, if it fills in back in with sediment, it's going to fill in where this might not. But, yeah, I think if most of them that live along there don't want to have it drained down, then I think that's the direction it's got to go. But hopefully they can improve it with their associations, so...
Mr. Chet, can I ask you a question, sir? Do you, do you still believe that, do you still believe that we should table any decision this evening until the 18th meeting, or what you've heard from the council members here in the last few minutes? Do you think that...
I won't speak for Teresa, but I speak for myself. I would like to hear the project, what exactly it is, what the drought down's going to be, what our property is going to look like potentially as that water's drawn down.
Okay. All right. I see what you're asking.
And these are the unanswered...
I was not able to get to the meeting other than that, so...
They don't even have those answers for me.
Mr. Brethorpe, I believe we have something on a city website that I don't know if would answer all your questions, but at least it would bring you up to speed.
Okay.
Yep.
I apologize, I feel like I'm coming late to the party here, but...
You're not the only one, brother.
Okay. And I guess you're not in my picture, but I would not like to see that happen just from the standpoint of our property going out that far.
So...
And losing so much of the, we happen to be on a, so it's really wide where we are, so it's quite a ways out toward that current lots. And if all of that is potentially water that gets hard and wildly frozen there, does that do with my property?
So I understand you clearly, right now, you're not in favor of the dam or...
For sure not.
Okay.
I would love to hear more, but if I get it on the website, that's great, too.
Yeah, I think the whole video is on there.
It's, it's...
Afterwards, I'll...
The other thing, the other possibility, I mean, not possibility, but the other thought on that is, this, part of the reason why we don't need to do anything today. We didn't need to do anything a year ago when we went to ask about the bridge, and we can always do it in the future, but once you do it, you can't go back. So I don't think it's, today is the right time to do it. You know, one of them said something about the funding won't be there. Well, I think there will be grant money available for large projects like this in the future. A lot of it comes from the Powerball or the lottery system, so I think we'll always have a chance at getting some grant money, and I don't think that's a good reason to go forward with any project of the future, so...
Well, and it's not the project that we asked for money for.
Right.
You know, and I feel like I am stealing the money, that we asked for, for this reason, not for the reason that they want us to do it now. So it's, it's different. I mean, with anything, with the state, if you write up a proposal wrong, you have to redo it, and this should be in this case, too. I would like us to get that bridge done. I'm willing to work with the realignment, and everybody knew from years ago, I wanted that bridge done, and we probably would have had it done a few years ago, but I was more than willing to listen to reason, and Tony gave me a lot of information, and that's the only reason why I think the bridge isn't done that, you know, because we looked at it. But like, like I said, at this time, I don't think we're sure what's going to happen or guaranteed what's going to happen, because if everything can, has changed so much since November, I just don't feel comfortable doing that to the taxpayers. And I agree, I've had, maybe seen three or four people that are open to it, but the people that are against it are very harsh against it. I really would like us to be more educated, but I think, I would like to see more, as Justin said, the Melrose Lake Association, put more time into this, you know, be like the big birch lake association, little birch lake, Sock Lake Association, the Chain of Lakes Association. See what you can do, you know, what can you do to work on the water? Does it mean get people to run pontoons, to stir it up? I don't know. That part of the water business that I do not know. I know how to, I know how to make water pure, but not, not that way. So that's, that's totally different. So until, I think, other groups need to work on a better idea than for us just to remove a dam. And the dam has been part of our soul of this town for over 150 years. I mean, I have some old plates of, you know, there's, history's pretty much gone, and that dam is the biggest history this community has. I don't want to just rip it out just because I want to make it a street. This has been here longer than most of other dams, so I'd like to see something better. More goodwill from the DNR before I move forward with something like this.
And there's mention made of, you know, use it or lose it. I've got the feeling that that dam's going to be out there 50 years from now, but let's just say, for instance, five years from now, there was this catastrophic failure. I'm thinking that there'd be support from a number of different state agencies to help us square it away, and at that point in time, it would probably be that Rock Arch Rapids Fish Passage, but I think there would be funding available.
All right.
I'll make a motion for option four.
Just an open forum, can I ask one question?
Excuse you, Dom, but I will. Go ahead.
I just want to, when it comes down to it, for all of you to make this decision, does it matter? Is the DNR really in charge of this or not?
Will they permit any changes to the body of water? And initially, if you've been following, I've been trying to follow since October, it was a dam, a rock dam, but it was a dam. Well, the November 19th meeting, and I don't recall if I remember seeing you sitting back there or not, but anyway, they came in and said, dam is out, Rock Arch Rapids, which is a series of levees and pools, and probably a, Mike, help me out here, 40 to 50-foot-wide river channel, roughly?
Yes, yep.
So that would be the extent of the water.
And the message was, that's the only thing that would be allowed, permitted, so that's the only way to let us do it. Before it was that, a year ago when we started the conversation, we basically said, lowering the water is a, it's not, it's a conversation ender, we're not, we're not looking to change the water level at all. So they said, oh, you can do a Rock Arch Rapids, meaning basically replace the dam with a series of steps. And we, we entertained that idea, and they, they had funding that we were allocated, but a couple months ago, they kind of came to us and said, we want to allow that.
And she said it would only affect a couple inches, if that, that was their words exactly.
Right.
It would only affect it by a couple inches.
So basically, they kind of changed gears and said, sorry, we can't allow that now. You can only basically turn it back to wherever, natural habitat, so...
And not, not, not that I'm going to argue the point, but in the December meeting, if I was taking good notes, they didn't say you couldn't have a Rock Arch Dam, but they would bury us with studies and this and that, and it would string on, and I just got the feeling every time that you were applying for some sort of a permit, oh, by the way, and there goes another $50,000 or $20,000 or whatever. They could string this out as long as they wanted. To your point, they want, if we're going to do anything, they want the Rock Arch Rapids. They didn't necessarily say we couldn't shoot for the dam, but they... They didn't necessarily say we couldn't shoot for the dam, but they, they'd just bury us, and if we ever got there, it would cost a fortune.
Is there anything else from the council? All right, you guys, tell me what you want to do.
I'll make a motion for option four, so we seek the funding still for what we need to do downstream, channel realignment, possibly the.
Retaining or craft wall.
I'll second that.
Okay. First and a second, any other discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, no new business, no informational items, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.